Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Regular Meeting of September the 9th, 2025. Meeting has been called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here.
At this time, if you would join myself and the council for those who are able to rise in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to Item 4, Public Comments for Items Not on the Agenda.
We have three speaker cards with Chris, followed by Chris Gonzalez, followed by Stephen Seymour. Please approach the podium.
There we go, green light. On the 380 overpass on San Mateo Avenue and 7th Avenue underneath, the lights have been burned out quite a while, maybe a couple of years, and hopefully we can move forward to lighten it up, keep it safer, and everything else that goes with it down there. It will be a much better place for everybody. And Crystal Springs Road and Donner, there's absolutely zero striping in the middle. Cars coming up, cars coming down, and they're kind of crossing over the middle, and you hate to have a head-on collision with that. Third, hopefully, I know we discussed it, I think we got the green light on Diamond 2. Hopefully, we kind of get that going so the safety of the kids and parents and everybody else over in Diamond 2. And that's about it. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. You as well. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm Chris Gonzalez, and I'm here on behalf of the Rotary Club of San Bruno. In a few weeks, we will be hosting, we're bringing back the taste of San Bruno to this very room. We have over 20 restaurants that are coming. The tickets are $25 for adults, $10 for children. You'll get a wine glass that you could put water, wine, beer, whatever. It's a very popular event, and we're very excited to bring it back. We have a sponsor that has offered tickets to city council members. If you'd like to come, we'd love to have you. I left a few copies of the flyer back there. We mostly just take a picture of it, but there's a few copies there if anybody, you know, doesn't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I'm Stephen Seymour. And I've come here today to talk to you all about an event that's going to happen on the 27th in our downtown. It's called Unity Day. And I first heard about it maybe about, I don't know, 10 weeks ago. And so I went to a couple of meetings, and it's really turned into quite an event that I think many in San Bruno would appreciate. There's more than 40 merchants that are involved. It starts out at the temple at 10 o'clock on the 27th, Saturday, the 27th. And in the temple, there'll be 25 to 35 vendors, cultural vendors, that will be selling their goods. And then in the merchant locations up and down the avenue, and that goes from 10 until 1 o'clock. In the merchants that'll be up and down the avenue, there'll be nonprofits and civic organizations that'll be tabled. And right now, there's about 20 of them. So picture this, you have the merchant whose door is open, people be coming down to the avenue, and maybe they haven't been there for some time. And so they'll get to see what exists on the avenue, and then they'll also get to talk to some nonprofits that have an impact and touch the city. And then at 1 o'clock, we open up Centennial Plaza, and for four hours, we'll have some entertainment there. And the entertainment will start with the land blessing from the Alone tribe, and then we'll have folkloric dance from Bell Elementary, and then we'll have South Pacific Island Dance from a group called Ata Matai, I think is how you say it. And then vibal music will be on stage, and after that, we'll have a salsa band. It's called Mendoza and Friends, Los Mendoza and Friends. So it's salsa and like Latin fusion. And then we finish off with the San Mateo County Poet Laureate, Antonio Lopez. And then after that, there'll be some like after-parties that happen on the avenue. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of you all, and hopefully you can attend. We wanted the city to have an involvement in this event, and we tried to go through the Culture and Arts Commission, but we're unable to get it agendized. But possibly next year, because the group that's putting on is the new San Bruno Chamber, and next year, hopefully, we can have some city involvement. But there are roughly 40 or 50 raffle items that will be raffled off on the stage, and the biggest one is a tour, you know, there's a lot of great raffle items. So there's a whole bunch of them. So please come on out and enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
No other speakers.
All right. Let's move on to announcements, please. A couple of things, and then we'll have some presentations. As most of you know, today marks 15 years since the tragic PG&E pipeline explosion and fire that killed eight, destroyed 38 homes, engulfed flames to a neighborhood. And we, the council and staff, were up at the site of Glenview and Earl, the park, to have a moment of silence, remembrance. Jackie Spear joined us, who helped us out significantly during that when she was in Congress, from our NTSB hearings to just being here for the community. This is something that our community still remembers and will never forget. The important thing is, is what I want to thank is also the staff and the council back then as well. We sit in this building today because a council back in 2010 decided to sue PG&E for what they did and hold accountable the PUC. Back then, it was somewhat of a gamble, like the David and Goliath, as they said, the resources that they had opposed to what we had. The council back then took this action because PG&E was coming to have us have fault or responsibility, which could have bankrupted us. But in the NTSB hearings, it was reaffirmed that it was not the city of San Bruno's pipeline explosion. One of the board members changed it as the finding came out a year later to have it forever say PG&E. So for us, I want to thank those then, I want to thank those today that joined me up there. And to say that there's always somewhat of a silver lining, former mayor would say, we wanted something good to come from all this. Accountability has happened, we are better off. And also, one of the survivors, Joey, who is extremely burned, went and visited him when he was in the burn ward. He lost his girlfriend as he tried to escape and save her. And he was there tonight. And as I've said to him then, and I will say again, he's a miracle. That all that he endured and still does today with the physical scars and the emotions, he was there. And he wanted to thank everyone here that continues to remember. So again, I want to thank everyone who was there and who has made a difference along the way. Also, unfortunately, we want to also acknowledge the lives that were lost on September 11th of 2001. 24 years later, we reflect on the courage of first responders, the resilience of survivors, and the strength of our nation as we carry their memory with respect and reverence. So, thank you for that. And now, let's go on to some presentations. We're going to go to Item C, Receive Update from Comcast. God, I feel like they're coming in.
I want to make sure you know that we've got your back. So, good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide this update on where we're at. As a reminder, I'm David Tash, and I'm the Regional Senior Vice President for California with Comcast. And we are proud to be making significant investments in San Bruno. We're going to talk through what that means from a technology, as well as a community investment standpoint that you're here from us. We're going to talk about where we are in the build-out, how we've engaged residents, and what comes next. And our goal is to ensure as seamless as possible, reliable, and beneficial for every resident of San Bruno. It has, as when I shared when I was up here last year, it is not perfection, but we are striving for excellence. And in the strive for perfection, hopefully, we can get close to that. So with that, I'm going to have some of my team members come up and share some of that progress. Thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tracy Mingo, Vice President of Technical Operations for Comcast, and just want to talk a little bit about, since the start of this project, we've invested millions of dollars in the infrastructure and network upgrades across the city of San Bruno. This investment ensures that the network here is future-ready and capable of supporting the community.
I very much apologize. Could you just bring the mic a little closer?
Is that better?
Yes.
I'm sharing it. Let me just make sure that we're sharing it within the room as well.
There we go. So as I said, we have invested at the start of this project, millions of dollars in the infrastructure across the city of San Bruno. And what that does is that prepares the network here for the future and will sustain the community for years to come. And a big part of that future is symmetrical upload and download speeds, which will be available soon. This is particularly important for families where we have individuals working from home, going to school, streaming, gaming, and sharing large files. The other thing I want to share with you today is that San Bruno is one of the first communities where every customer is receiving our newest XB10 modem. And what's really special about that device is that it supports up to 300 devices that can be connected to it. So what that means is a whole household can game, stream, you know, take video calls, do whatever they need to do and stay connected with room for growth down the line. In addition to the technology and all the investments we've made there, it's just as important that we create a wonderful experience as the citizens of San Bruno transition. So our technical operations team has taken a white glove approach to making sure that every customer's transition is seamless and meeting customers where they're at. We're trying to handle each and every customer with care and, as David said, with excellence. So we've built a five-step program to make sure that we guide and support every customer. So the first step is a welcome letter introducing Comcast and the process. Then there's a legal notice with the formal details of the change. And then there's reminder door tags that we go out in the field and hand-deliver to everyone's home. And then there's phone calls to anyone who has not responded to make sure that we can get them set up and get our technician in the home. And finally, on installation day, our technicians are on-site to support the transition, answer any questions, and make sure the customers have a wonderful transition to Xfinity. So this combination of investment in technology and white glove customer service is the first approach to assure a smooth and confident experience for all of the residents of San Bruno.
Well, good evening, council. Jonathan Fisher, Vice President of Construction and Engineering for Comcast, and excited to be back before you to talk about the progress that we've made in the transition to date. So what you're viewing right now is a map of our progress. Everything that you see in green, so this is outlining the city of San Bruno. Everything in green has been completed, so it is now on to the Comcast network. Everything that is in orange is currently in progress and will be completed by the end of September. And then the yellow is the final leg of the transition to be completed in late October. So we're really excited. And parallel to this activity, there was network hardening that was done to get us ready for the cut-over stage. 100% of that activity has been completed. And this is really, for a large project, we believe has gone very smoothly because of the collaboration with city and with staff. We have great lines of communication, not only just from an escalatory perspective, but also just in the day-to-day administering of permitting and making sure that they understand where our crews are and the safeguards that were taken as we do our activity. So very excited about the progress that we're making. We expect to complete on time. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to my partner, Marcos Vicente, to talk about the product.
Thank you, Jonathan. Good evening, council. Marcos Vicente, I'm the Regional CFO for the California region. As Tracy highlighted, and as well as Jonathan, throughout actually the migration, we have increased broadband speed, high-speed, the overall speed, while at the same time, we're keeping, we're keeping actually the price at or below city nets. We have been very engaged with the community. And a few things that I want to emphasize here is a very strong commitment that we have, a few engagement channels, I would say, you know, we have our mobile, actually billboard around San Bruno, essentially really going everywhere, trying to reach out every opportunity there. Thanks to the city, we actually hosted a 7,000-plus residents actually on a telephone town hall. Again, really a great, a great successful there. And also a few other upcoming digital skills workshops there. Being very visible, responsible, a few things I want to emphasize, the long-term, the long-term investment in San Bruno. Number one, we've donated $50,000 to San Bruno Education Foundation. We've also donated $30,000 in kind of movie screen system, and a few other sponsorships coming up, you know, of a moving in the park, concerts, Halloween Festival, Christmas tree lighting, and First Thursday Downtown. And I have to say, this is just the beginning. A heartfelt commitment to San Bruno, and it's not only within the transition here, but really for years ahead. With that, I would like to hand it over back to David so he can wrap us up.
Thank you, Marcos, and thank you, team. Looking ahead, our immediate goal is to finish the highlighted areas on time and on schedule. No indications that we won't. We'll then be focusing on converting the remaining city net customers. We'll just point out, we've converted about half of the physical plant, but only about a third of the customers. We purposely targeted those areas that had less customers on it so we could test and learn along the way, to have as minimal disruption as we do move forward into the larger swaths of customers. I think several of you have been converted over and several of you haven't. And then, once it's complete, the network will be fully integrated. As Marcos said, we're delivering faster speeds, improved reliability, state-of-the-art, and future-ready capacity for San Bruno. And on behalf of Comcast, thank you again for your partnership, your support. This transition has been, from the beginning, about ensuring San Bruno residents and businesses are connected today and ready for tomorrow. Thank you very much for the partnership.
Thank you all for the presentation and the information and the update. Any questions or comments from colleagues? So obviously, with no questions and we all being quiet means you did a great job.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate all the feedback and keep it coming. We want to get it as right as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you again. Next, we'll move on to Item D, Receive Presentation on the First Year of Operations at the Recreation and Aquatic Center.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and council members. My name is Damian Santo. I'm the Deputy Director for the Community Services Department here in San Bruno. I'm here with the recreation team to provide an update on the first year of operations at the RAC. Here is the agenda for tonight's presentation. This presentation will provide the city council with a comprehensive overview of the San Bruno Recreation and Aquatic Center's first year of operations, highlighting key performance metrics, community impact, program participation, financial performance, and future opportunities for growth and improvement. The Recreation and Aquatic Center will be referred to as the RAC during this presentation. This slide shows the organizational chart for the Recreation Division, which oversees the RAC. As you can see, it takes a dedicated team to manage the facility as large and complex as the RAC. Each staff member plays an important role in ensuring the center runs smoothly and continues to provide high-quality programs and services for the community. I'm now going to take a few moments to introduce the members of the RAC team. First, we have Recreation Supervisor Jen Wilson, who oversees facility rentals, youth and adult sports, and serves as a liaison for RAC maintenance. She is supported by Recreation Coordinator Yaya Solario, who manages youth and adult sports leagues, camps, and classes. Our Accounting and Customer Service Lead Judy Gilli oversees the service desk and manages RAC memberships. She is supported by Elizabeth Sambath, who assists with customer service and provides facility supervision during evenings and weekends. Recreation Supervisor Tim Stabe oversees aquatics and fitness programs. Supporting him is Recreation Coordinator Dan Reiken, who manages swim lessons, lifeguard staff, and assists with pool operations. Finally, Recreation Supervisor Patrick O'Malley manages special events, city-run camps, contract classes, and marketing. He is supported by two Recreation Coordinators, Heidi Roman, who leads city-run camps and special events, while Giovanna Toscano leads contract classes and major community events. Together, they collaborate on marketing and social media initiatives. In addition to their individual program areas, the entire RAC team supports the day-to-day operations of the facility, and each member is always ready to step in whenever needed. The full-time staff provide strong leadership for the RAC, but it takes a large team of part-time employees to keep the facility operating more than 95 hours each week. When the RAC first opened, we started with 79 part-time staff. Over the course of the year, we hired an additional 72 employees, nearly doubling our part-time workforce. This growth in staffing allowed us to expand fitness classes, increase evening and weekend rentals, expand programs such as Child Watch and Social Connection, and provide excellent customer support at the service desk. In addition, we created part-time lead positions within each work group. These leads provide frontline supervision and help ensure smooth operations whenever full-time staff is not on-site. I will now bring up Recreation Supervisor Tim Stabe, who is going to discuss aquatic and fitness programs at the RAC.
Sorry. Thank you, Damian, Mr. Mayor, and City Council. Since our grand opening, the Aquatics Department has expanded operations three times. In the fall of 2024, we opened up the outdoor lap pool and the kiddie cove. In the spring of 2025, we expanded indoor pool operations by seven and a half hours per week. And in the summer of 2025, the indoor lap pool hours mirrored those of the center itself, and the outdoor pool was open seven days a week. We also expanded our programming. Since the grand opening, we have offered over 200 swim lessons, which are enjoyed by over 775 participants of all ages. We have offered two CPR and first aid trainings. We have trained 54 lifeguards, nine lifeguard instructors, and 12 swim instructors. We offer water aerobics six days a week, and those classes draw between 20 and 25 participants per class. We held two special events, the Polar Plunge on New Year's Day and the Flick and Float in June. In fitness, we offer contract classes and drop-in classes, personal training, and fitness room orientations. In fall, we will be adding additional drop-in fitness classes and equipment. And allow me to please introduce Recreation Supervisor Patrick O'Malley.
Thanks, Tim. Yeah, I'm just going to briefly go over some of the programming, events, camps, classes, and the marketing strategy we've had over the past year. The first one you see here, we were really excited to launch our Child Watch program. As you can see, over 40 families have utilized this program where they can come, use the facility while they know that their kids are in the safe hands of our staff here. We're really looking forward to expanding this program in the next year. As Tim mentioned, with his fitness and aquatics offerings expanding this next year, we're really trying to get these numbers up and excited for the next steps with Child Watch. With our events this year, hopefully a lot of you were able to come to every single one of our special events. But I wanted to highlight mainly our Community Day event, which was a really big success. We're really excited to bring back the tradition of Community Day here in San Bruno. I'm really excited to see where we can take it next in the next couple of years, especially partnering with Posey Parade going forward. And as you can see, we've had events throughout the entire year with really good attendance and really good community support with those. So really excited for the next steps with those as well. For our city-run camps, we've seen some of the highest numbers we've seen historically. As you can see, 529 campers this summer, 75% of which were San Bruno residents. I'd also like to note that seven out of the 10 weeks were completely sold out, five of those weeks having a pretty robust wait list. So looking forward, we can definitely expand those numbers with a lot more offerings, generating more revenue through our camps, hiring on some more staff, which gives a really good summer employment to a lot of younger San Bruno residents who were campers themselves. And then just going on the enhancements we have there, just building the camps in general to make more fun for all the kiddos in the community. In terms of our contract camps and classes, same thing. We're really excited to bring all of our contract camps and classes this summer into the RAC facility itself instead of having to go to auxiliary sites, which is really great for parents to have one singular drop-off for their kids in different camps and classes throughout the summer. And then just highlighting our Social Connection program, as we had mentioned earlier, which has had really steady growth, allowing us to hire on one more additional staff member to support that program, which is really exciting, giving more access for folks at the RAC here. With all the expansion of all of our programs, events, classes, and offerings here at the RAC, we've had to take a more dynamic approach to our marketing. So as you know, we partnered with Singer Associates this year to develop a brand-new website for the RAC with some screenshots there showing kind of the new design. They also helped us refine the RAC logo that we'll be using going forward. And then with that, we've increased our digital and print promotions, and we've introduced a lot of technology into how we're utilizing our marketing strategy, mainly with dynamic marketing, specifically with social media. So the next slide shows some of the growth we had in social media over the past year. And yeah, shout out to my team, Heidi and Giovanna, for really working towards new and exciting ways to engage the community in public. As you can see, these three charts show our reach, our followers, and our community engagement and interaction with folks. So we look forward to continuing up with those engagements with the community and just letting them know what we have to offer here. And then, yeah, so with that, I'm going to introduce Jen Wilson, another Recreation Supervisor, to talk a little bit more about our facility and the sports programs.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and members of the council. My name is Jen Wilson, and I'm going to be speaking with you about facility rentals. In our first year, we hosted a total of 295 rentals for events such as meetings, multi-day conferences, baby showers, engagement parties, milestone birthdays, and celebrations of life. We have hosted such groups as the County Office of Education, the county elections, the San Bruno Education Foundation, the San Bruno Community Foundation, city council meetings and commission meetings, and the San Bruno Rotary, to name a few. With our sports here at the RAC, we have, sorry, we have added an online gym schedule, which is updated weekly and allows us to update the gym schedule and availability in real time so that patrons know what's going on in the gym before they arrive. We have contracted classes for the summer. As Patrick mentioned, we had added four new contract classes this summer, making six contracted camps altogether, where we saw 166 children enrolled in those programs. In a multipurpose facility, we need to create balance between our members' use, our drop-in programs, the RAC programs that we offer, and our gym rentals. So as you can see this year, this past year, we had 307 total gym rentals. Here, I'd like to highlight Yaya, our youth sports coordinator, who, or sports coordinator, who puts together these next couple of programs. So our elementary sports program this year, we participate in the Regional Recreation League comprised of Brisbane, San Bruno, and Mil... we participate in the Regional Recreation League comprised of Brisbane, San Bruno, and Milbrae. We hosted basketball with a total of seven teams and 55 participants. And in volleyball, we hosted six volleyball clinics on Fridays at the RAC with a total of 25 participants in our clinics. Our middle school sports, we participate in the North County Regional League, which is comprised of six Bay Area cities. In the fall, we offered a co-ed volleyball, flag football, and cross-country programs. In the winter, we hosted the boys and girls basketball program. We were able to host the eighth-grade championship basketball games here at the RAC, which was really exciting and vibrant. And if you look at the upper picture, you'll notice that that's Noah Liu, a San Bruno resident who won the girls' three-point shooting contest within the North County Recreational League. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Judy Gilli, who is going to introduce or talk about memberships and admission.
Thank you, Jen. The forward button, right? Thank you, Jen, Mayor Medina, and members of the council. My name is Judy Gilli, and I run the service desk here, and I'm in charge of memberships, along with Elizabeth Sambath, who's with me tonight. And we do all the memberships and admissions. So I'm going to show you some summary numbers of what we have done this past year. So for annual memberships, we, and I'm going to round off all the numbers, so don't trip over my words. So rounding up is 1,500 annual memberships that we sold, primarily with the residents, 1,000 on residents and 450 on non-residents. And that's for annual memberships. For the monthly memberships, we sold, we have about 1,000 memberships, again, primarily with the residents coming in at 650 and 400 on non-residents. And on the punch passes, which is not a membership, but they buy 15 punch passes and they use them as they go, we sold 3,160, 2,000 in resident and 1,200 in non-resident. So that's a whole lot of memberships for our year, and our team did a really, really good job. And I would just wanted to insert that we're getting really great feedback. People are happy. People say it's awesome, and it's clean, and they love it. So just some daily admissions numbers. On the daily, throughout this year, we had big numbers. 37,000 people came through our RAC, 11,000 and 9,000 in the 14 to 49 category, about 2,000 in both the adult categories, 50-plus, and in youth, 6,000 to about 4,000 in the youth category. The last category is kind of jumbled with the vouchers, the less-than-two-years-old, the inclement weather, and the ADA passes. So altogether, so altogether 37,000 admissions. And then finally, total RAC visits amongst all the three categories, between membership, punch passes, and daily, daily sales, is 118, rounding up 119,000 total visits for the RAC this year. So I thank you very much. I'm going to pass it back to Damian to finish off our presentation.
Thank you, Judy, and everyone for your excellent information on the programs we offer at the RAC. While we're still finalizing this year's financial data, this chart provides a strong estimate of the RAC's first-year financial information. The RAC team achieved many great accomplishments during our first year. Thousands of residents connected with us through sold-out camps, fitness classes, and signature events that created strong community momentum. The RAC has quickly established itself as San Bruno's hub for recreation, wellness, and connection. We built a solid foundation by expanding aquatic programming, offering diverse programs, and implementing new technology tools. At the same time, we recognized that demand exceeded expectations, which highlighted opportunities to strengthen staffing, build capacity, and improve systems moving forward. With a successful first year behind us, the team is now focused on continuing to improve operations as we enter year two. Our priority is to expand opportunities by offering more camps, aquatics, fitness, and enrichment programs to keep pace with the community demand. We are also committed to improving accessibility and inclusion by managing capacity more effectively so that more families and community members can participate. At the same time, we will refine our registration and technology systems to ensure a smoother customer experience. Finally, we are deepening our partnerships with local groups to strengthen events and broaden our community impact. This concludes our presentation on the first year of operations at the Recreation and Aquatic Center, and we are available for questions.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone. Obviously, it takes a team, and it's hard to believe that it's already been one year already, and so much more to go. Questions or comments from colleagues? Yeah, no, no, go ahead, please.
No, thank you. And as a member here, and I try to get here as often as possible, I want to thank you all for having a great place to work out and really just, it's an amazing building. And buildings are just buildings, and without staff, you know, what is it, right? A space. So I first wanted to thank you all for what you have done so far. My interest in the future is what are the revenue streams that are likely most going to be beneficial to the sustainability of the RAC? And in your last slide, you had a couple. I just wonder if you can give a little bit more detail on the plan moving forward.
Certainly. So increasing membership and daily admissions is a big revenue stream for us, and then increasing facility rentals at the facility so that we can have this room rented Friday nights and Saturday nights every week, and then additional programming throughout the other rooms in the facility. But those are our major revenue generators for this facility.
Thank you for that. So what is the projected, like, increase that you're anticipating to be able to reach? You've got to have a, what target in membership and punch passes are you thinking? Is it 10%, 20%? What's your goal?
It's really tough to project. I would, I would say that our goal would be a 15% increase of membership. But with our changing of our membership fee structure and things like that, with a lot of folks transitioning from the punch pass, especially with the youth, with us adding the new youth memberships, it's really hard to define a number, but we do expect to find somewhere around that 10% to 15% growth.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor? May I ask?
City Manager.
Certainly. I just want to thank the team for being here today. You guys did a great job. Thank you for shaving five minutes off your presentation. I noticed it. I also want to recognize Travis Carlin. I mean, Travis was a big player in this process as well. I know he will entrust his team to run this place. Travis has been an incredible lead for them, so I just want to make sure he's in the back of the room, he gets credit where credit is due. Also, I just want to acknowledge, this team came together this year. This team did not exist a year ago. So these are, these are people who came together to sort of help pull this program together. And despite Damian's quick dance there, I mean, I think we are really learning as we go, and we will continue to learn, we'll continue to grow, we'll continue to find where the strengths are at the RAC. And I think with Travis, Damian, and the team, you've got good people in place. So I just want to thank them for a job well done.
Thank you.
If it was up to me, I'd say, "Come in late tomorrow," but somebody's got to open the building. But thank you again to everyone. As was stated, in one year, a lot has been accomplished, and you should be proud. And so, go home and relax. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to move on to consent. And I'm sorry, were there any speaker cards for presentations and announcements? Okay. Consent: All items are considered routine or implemented by an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be one single public comment, period, for all items in this section. Anything to, for recuse, to pull for separate vote? Any questions or comments on any of the items? Are there any speaker cards?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just wanted to comment on item D. Field lights.
Anything else? Hearing none, then D. Consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, staff. Sports and San Bruno go hand-in-hand. And anytime we can go ahead and improve our fields, which by improving the lighting is something that should warrant a little bit more attention. This is something that I think a lot of people have been waiting for, and I just wanted to make sure that you, staff is acknowledged for putting this together to improve the lighting and replace the light at Diamond III that got knocked down in that storm years ago. So thank you very much.
Okay. Any action by council?
Move to approve the items on consent.
Thank you.
Second?
Motion and second, and to approve all items under consent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Recorded and passed unanimously. With that, we will move on to item number seven. And what I'm also going to do is, before we go into closed session, we are going to move up items nine and 10. So just be prepared. So item A, establish council ad hoc committee on downtown engagement. Vice Mayor.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I first want to thank the council for agendizing this topic tonight. I said this before, it remains true. Our residents have been asking for a more vibrant downtown for decades. And this subcommittee, if approved, provides a way to improve communication between our downtown community and the council. Approving this subcommittee aligns with the council's approved strategic initiative by creating new and improved channels of communication for collaboration and trust-building. The intent is to make sure our downtown community has the opportunity to share their concerns and interests. As listed in the staff report, there are five preliminary goals subject to change with the council having the right to change any or all of them. One, build stronger relationships with businesses, property owners, shoppers, and residents. Two, encourage private investment and beautification alongside public improvements. Three, provide a structured process to gather feedback through surveys and meetings. Four, assist with activating Centennial Plaza and supporting community events downtown. And five, deliver practical, community-backed recommendations to the council for action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Questions for the Vice Mayor in regards to the proposed ad hoc? And was that the Committee on Downtown Engagement? That's, because I know it was different, but anyway, go ahead, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I can answer that. That's, the name of the committee is not as important. At one point, I was suggesting the Downtown Improvement Committee, but there is a San Bruno Improvement Group that requested that the name be different enough so that there's no confusion. So I'm open to hear any suggested changes. I just wanted to make sure that it's not the name that's as important, it's the work that we're going to do to provide a means to communicate to staff and the council of what our downtown is going through.
And how, oh, I'm sorry. Did you, oh, I'm sorry, apologize. And how much time do we think, and again, it's a thought, it's not for sure, for staff, staff resources?
Sure. I'm anticipating minimal amount of staff time. If staff was interested in utilizing the committee to provide surveys or information out to the downtown regarding any events or whatever communication the staff was interested, that would be great. We'd be happy to do that work, walking up and down the streets and making sure everyone has a flyer, making sure all of our businesses have opportunity for some input. To answer your question, I don't anticipate taking much time at all. I, if staff wanted to come to a meeting to hear directly from, from the attendees, that would be fine. I would be fine with the limit that, what the council or staff is thinking that it should have so we don't exceed it. But I don't have a direct answer for you. But if I had to say something, I would, I would say no more than four hours a month. A lot of this work could be exchanged, primarily in communication through emails, through summary of what the council or what the subcommittee, or what the subcommittee's doing, what we're planning to do, and then reporting back. So keeping staff advised. And by all means, if staff wanted to attend the meetings, they would be welcome to attend, but not required.
Okay. Other questions, Councilmember Zalazar?
Good, Chair. Thank you. So a concern I have, Vice Mayor, with what is outlined here is that all of these are very, very broad topics. And the way I understand our ad hoc committees are normally set up, it's when we have a goal in mind and the council wants to allow sort of a narrow or a focusing or an intense focus of study on a particular thing and come back with a single recommendation. So I think generally, that's how we approach this. And I'm thinking about when we had the, the subcommittee to talk about, you know, revenue measures. You know, it was, staff sort of had an idea of things that they wanted to present, but there was a lot of material, and we really wanted to narrow it down and have a group of us come back with a single recommendation to the rest of the council. Like, here's, here's, out of the, you know, 10 options that were presented here, you know, one or two that are actually viable based on all of the, the intense research that we've done. But with everything that you've included here, this is a lot. And I think I mentioned this last time. Some of these things, to me, are very clearly staff responsibilities and things that we've already allocated to staff either through a strategic initiative or some other direction. And so I don't want to send the wrong signal to staff that, you know, we are going to be pursuing other ideas versus what we've already asked them to start looking into. So I would have, I would have a concern that, you know, the direction from this five-person body should be a lot more tailored to a specific decision. And I think that there are opportunities there for somebody to sort of narrow things down for us and bring it back. But I think this is, it's too much. I mean, the scope is kind of in all different fields and not really, none of them are really tailored enough where we can expect to come back with even a narrowed field of opportunities. And, you know, I think establishing the relationships is an important thing. You know, you're number one. And I believe that you're already engaged very heavily, and we've heard from the community how you, how engaged you are, and they, they all, they know you, and they feel that they can talk to you. And that seems to have been, so far, a very effective conduit for you to bring back things that you're hearing, reinforce, you know, what the community is thinking. And so a lot of that is already happening. So I don't know that it would, you know, how this would actually change what we're, what we're getting. And I know that Councilmember Hamilton is also very engaged in the community down there. You guys spend a lot of time both patronizing the businesses and interacting with the business owners, as we all do to some extent. But there are a lot of things here that, that might be, I really think, concerning because they would really encroach on things that I believe should be staff things, and especially things that, you know, you mentioned the private investments. And when we, we talk about, you know, somebody representing the city to encourage investment, to start, you know, discussing deal points with, with private entities. to start, you know, you know, discussing deal points with, with private entities on investing the city, that's where I would, I would caution that we, as council members, should probably defer to professional staff, both the city manager and city attorney, to take the lead on those types of discussions. You know, the feedback, you know, I've mentioned that that is definitely something we need to focus on, but that's already a strategic initiative that I think staff's working on. So, if this would be something in addition to or separate from what staff is already working on, I think it would be worthwhile understanding from staff first what they intend to do. And then, if there is a gap that could use additional work, then maybe we can come back and address that in a very, you know, focused thing where, you know, this, you know, maybe more focused on, on businesses, maybe more focused on San Mateo Avenue, more focused on development, something, you know, that needs to be more tailored, that staff isn't addressing, then, you know, that would be, I think, appropriate to, to sort of channel what those needs are. But, you know, I, I think, you know, kind of a formula for success is that you want to be very clear on what you plan to deliver. And I think you're, you're biting off a lot. And in order, to really be able to come back to this body in some set period of time that we would agree to with some really strong findings and strong recommendations, I, I, I think you're going to make it difficult for yourself by making it too broad. So, I would, I would suggest that maybe this could be retooled in a way that you come back with maybe, you know, one or two of these points with a lot more structure around, you know, in six months or in 12 months, you know, through a series of meetings, we will address this particular issue and come back with these, you know, recommendations. And I think I could support something like that, but I think this is, this is a whole lot. And I think it's going to be really difficult to come back with something solid on, on any of these if you have it so, so broad. Thank you.
Yes. So, thank you, Councilman Salazar. One quick edit that I put here instead of investment would be improvements, right? So, so talking about how our businesses can improve the look of their properties and kind of encouraging them to do so. As for the scope, I kept it a little broader to be able to get more input from our council on what their vision on how we should be, how we should be improving our downtown. What I could assure you that, or maybe, maybe this will assure you, that if I were to say we would come back by the end of the year with any recommendations still need to be approved by the council. That's, that's how subcommittees work, right? So, I think September, October, November, December, in three and a half months, being able to come back and be able to show you at that point what the community is thinking about and the engagement process. And if that would make you feel better about approving it till December. And there's only so much time, you could have so many meetings. So, I would figure we would maybe have a meeting a month, you know, and but doing more engagement with our community and, and getting information out to them. And the budgetary part with staff time, I've already discussed, but what I would request, and it would be the surveys to be able to be printed out and to hand out to every business in our downtown. And there's, there's about 128, right? So, I believe at some point in our budget, I don't know if it was a year before, that the council does have a budget, and I'm, I'm looking for the city manager to be able to, to print out information for our community. And I've never done it. And I don't, I don't know if anybody's ever done it, but I recall that that was one of the things that we had budgeted. And I'm just going to see if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, to have our city manager confirm that.
I'm not sure we have a budget line item like that, but we certainly have the ability to be able to do this, you know, if we're, if it's 168 surveys or something, that's, that in and of itself is not terribly problematic.
And then, the other guardrail there is that anything that would say, whatever this name of this committee is going to be, anything printed would go through staff to say, is this okay? You know, is there anything that they would want to change? And that shouldn't take too long for a review of just making sure, like, we are collaborating on obtaining the information from our downtown community. So that it could come back in a form that is digestible for the council to understand what our community wants. What, what is their priority now? Because we have our priorities, but we haven't really engaged with our community to know what they want. And I don't have knowledge of where we are with the community engagement. I do see more things on social media, Mr. Adams. So, thank you very much for making those posts. And those are scratching the surface of the overall community. But I think it's important that we provide an opportunity to focus in our downtown. And what this approval would be is it's a clear statement to our community is our council is interested in hearing what our downtown has to say. It doesn't mean we're going to act on it, but hey, let's let the councilmen who represent that, that district, and it's not by choice that I'm representing downtown, it's just how it worked out by where I live, and the 10,000 or so residents that each council person has in their district. So, I hope I kind of answered some of your questions and it could make you feel more comfortable that this isn't going to be something that's going to take a year. It's going to be focused on making sure that all of our businesses have the ability to connect with two council members that are on a subcommittee that are interested in hearing from them and having a conversation.
So, I kind of like the direction that it's moving in. And what I would, what I would recommend, that if, if there is a subcommittee, that the, the subcommittee be chartered with creating a survey. But I don't know that delivering the survey, interpreting the survey or anything should also stay with the subcommittee. But I do think there would be value in perhaps having a, a subcommittee consider what topics should be addressed in a survey. And even then, I mean, whenever we put things out for, you know, when we're considering putting something on a ballot, we have professional people that come in and pretty much guide us on, you know, here's how, here's how you should ask a question if you're, if you're trying to get to the meat of something. And, you know, what combination of questions do you put in? So, it's, it is a, a field of specialty that people have in, in formulating those things. So, well, I, I do see that there is value in targeting the merchants downtown and, and asking for their, their feedback. I'm also wondering if, you know, two of us, any, any combination of us two have the, the skills to really put together a meaningful survey that's actually going to give us something that's going to help us move a program forward. And it has to be within the context of what can we actually afford to do, right? Let's not just ask them for a wish list and then come back and say, well, yeah, sorry, we can't do any of that. But, you know, having it within a, a framework of, you know, these are things that we could potentially do. And what value do you put on these things? And where do they, they fall into your, your priority list? You know, I could see us really getting something of value from that. But I, I like the direction it's moving in. I, I think I could support a, a subcommittee working on that, that survey. But after, I think that should really be part of our strategic initiative that focuses on doing surveys and, and gathering feedback. This could be a, a component of that. It's already funded. So, we've already all agreed that we want to do that, but maybe the subcommittee could then just be focused on developing that portion of, of the outreach.
Thank you. So, I, I don't know the status of the survey that I think staff has direction to proceed in. But if it makes, I like the direction that we're going. So, I want to keep on, you know, come on in, come on in. It's okay. So, the idea there is how about in two months, we bring you back the survey? And you could look at it, and if you want to change any of it, you can change it. But it's with the power of ChatGPT, I mean, like downtown surveys are, the expertise is, is in the ChatGPT, right? It has the universe or the earth's input. So, I just want to be able to work with our community and as we're going into the, into next year, be able to say, this is what we accomplished. We were able to have these meetings. And at, and the council will decide at that point, receive the report and decide to take any, if, any action or none. Because it always comes back to the council determining that. And so, I don't know, did that bring you a little closer?
You really threw me with the ChatGPT because I, I'm, I'm not as confident in an AI's ability to really give you something meaningful on something that's this complicated. I mean, AI is amazing. It's amazing what it's done. But to be honest, it ain't all that. But, no, I, I think, I think we're, we're moving towards something that, that I could definitely support. The timing seems like it would be perfect for having something in hand for our next strategic session in, in January, in that timeframe. So, having that, that data before the end of the year, I think would be perfect. And so, you know, assuming you're not going to use ChatGPT for this, I think I could support it.
I'm sorry. So, just on that point, just I have a suggestion. I, I, I share Councilmember Salazar's caution. And what I would recommend is, we're not, we're not proposing something that's the first time ever been done in, on the planet. There's, we have many communities that have done this already. City of Richmond is grown famous for their community, their community engagement, their community surveys. And I don't think we should be too proud to plagiarize from other, from past successful efforts. So, I would, I would recommend that, that be part of the, the committee's work is to identify those other communities that have done this successfully and copy freely.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think these goals are achievable. We just need to strategize and target the right group. For example, number one, I think we, I don't think that we have ever had the opportunity to reach out to the business, the, the property owners. So, the ad hoc committee can serve as a liaison to communicate with the business owners. And not just, I, I think majority of the time, we communicate with the business owners and not with, with the, the property owners. I think the goal is to encourage the property owners to be more proactive and, and know our goal, the city's goal, is to make them not so much accountable for their share of the improvement of their property, but make them proactive and, and let them know that our goal, the city's goal, is to beautify the, the downtown area. When it comes to the number three, I think the ad hoc committee can do most of the work, like what the Vice Mayor Marty Medina mentioned, that we can do the walk. I mean, I, I can volunteer and, and be a part of the ad hoc committee. I mean, we can do all the work and, and do the survey, gather facts and information from business owners. The number four is basically if we communicate with the San Bruno chambers with regards to community events. And I think that would be their, their goal is to gather the, the community and the business owners. And how do they do that? We can incorporate our ideas, the ad hoc committees or the chamber, so we can collaborate with that when it comes to how we can bring the community together in these events. I think it's just the number that we're seeing are a lot, but in, in reality, these are just gathering information and, and getting in touch with the right group or, or people. I think this, this goals can be achievable. And we're in the right, like what Councilmember Salazar mentioned, that we're in the right time to, to gather initiatives for our next year. I know we're in, in September and it seemed like the year is fast approaching to its end. And next thing you know, it's January and we don't have all the time to gather all this information. I would support it.
Through the chair. So, so one thing on that, Councilmember Alvarez, is the, I, I believe what's really important in these things are the, you know, if you look at the verbs that, that are included in, in the discussion points, I, I think it's, it's important to really focus on what, what we intend to do. Because while I fully support gathering information for policymaking, when we, we potentially cross a line and we're saying we're encouraging investment, where we're providing structure, where we're assisting with activating, those things to me sort of go beyond what I believe our role should be. And so, that's why I, I take issue with those particular things. And I really wanted to focus on the information gathering, which I think is something that's well within our authority and something that would be completely appropriate for the council to request more information on. And that's why I was trying to channel it toward that. So, I, I really want to avoid having this be so broad and having the potential for there even to be an expectation that the subcommittee is going to be directly engaging on doing some of those things. Because I really think that's where we're going to get ourselves in trouble. So, I'd like to refocus the conversation back on the, on the information gathering and specifically on building the, the survey that can feed our, our policy at the beginning of next year.
Through the mayor?
Oh, yes, Mr. Hamilton.
If I can make a suggestion on, on that point, I understand that concern there. And the, I, I would also, you know, recommend, you know, especially given the, the short timeframe of trying to get, get as much information as we can before we enter our strategic initiative season. I do like the, the, the timing of that and we should take advantage of that. So, maybe the, the points in number two and number four can be kind of folded into the, to the information gathering. So, instead of, you know, the, the, one of the roles of the, of the subcommittee to be, to, you know, encourage, you know, private improvements and beautification, maybe we make sure that the, the survey asks questions about that. For example, if we had a facade improvement program, would you take advantage of it if it looked like this or if it looked like this, that sort of thing for number two? Or for number four, for assisting with activating Centennial Plaza, hey, hey merchants, we have this, we have this, this space. What kinds of things do you want to see there? What, you know, what, and if there was an event like this, would you, would you participate? If there was an event like this, would you participate? What, what ideas are we not thinking of? So, I think, I think we can hit, I think we can, if we just focus things on the information gathering, I think we can really do a lot of good here.
Yeah. So, activating Centennial Plaza, and I'm gonna maybe have to go to the city manager or the community services director, aren't, isn't there already in a plan for just doing that? He's texting.
I was texting Travis to come in here, but I think you heard anyways. Let me, let me.
Oh, he's quick.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I can, let me, let me weave through this a little bit because I think I want to answer a question that the Vice Mayor asked. I want to elaborate on something Councilmember Alvarez mentioned. And as Travis is making his way to the microphone, we can answer the third question. So, we are working right now with Godby Research. As you know, Godby has done many community surveys in our community here in the past. He's got a wealth of information about our history of the sentiment of the community over time. We have drafted the survey. We have drafted the survey as we speak and we're going to launch the survey frankly in a couple of weeks. That's number one, to give you the answer to that one. Number two, if I can, just get clarity from the council, when we keep saying community, I think there's several communities of interest in this conversation. I think you have the downtown, you have the merchants, I think you have the property owners, and this is exactly what Councilmember Alvarez was saying, and then you have the customers or the residents, depending on how we want to define that. So I think we keep going back and forth between surveying the community. I think you're referencing the downtown merchants and property owners. I don't think you mean the community overall. I, I mean, if you can, you know, you can, you can elaborate on that later. I just want to make sure I provide the feedback. And I was just texting Travis, Community Services Director Carlin on, we had an agenda item. Actually, I thought it was on tonight, but apparently it's bumped the one with the downtown improvement group for activating Centennial Plaza. Do you want to just elaborate a little bit more on what the intentions are with that?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Travis Carlin, Community Services Director. We do have a opportunity before us. The San Bruno Improvement Group that you all know about has been given a grant by the San Bruno Community Foundation for about $10,000. And our relationship here with Comcast that we've built, we've gotten some sponsorships for some programming here at the rack. We've also got some programming dollars for the senior center, and then they also just bought us a new movie screen for our movie, because in the park program. They've also been generous to offer us a $15,000 grant to, to activate Centennial Plaza. So what our hopes are is that we can combine the efforts of the San Bruno community, or I'm sorry, the San Bruno Improvement Group, along with the dollars that we're going to get from Comcast to do a once a month event down at Centennial Plaza. So we're still working through the details of that and we're looking to bring forward an item to the council at the next council meeting.
Okay. Thank you. And, and then I want to, because I'm going back in time now, but August of 2021, there was a Vice Mayor named Marty Medina who brought forward this proposal from before about a downtown group. Improve communications with our business community, build relationships and trust, develop trust, obtain input via surveys and community meetings, parking, street closures, events, et cetera. Assist business, businesses with grant applications, promote businesses, visitor guide via social media, provide recommendations to council for action. And obviously, there was some good news, you know, obviously, money aside from landscaping, which still needs to be completed. The Posey Park, which is the fountain, that money is there and that is being worked on. There's also, and if I, if it's all right, city manager asked the director, how much are we spending on Posey Park? Not only there's a sculpture that's gone out for bids, but there's also revamping the art that's up there, which is, was unveiled back in 2014, I believe. And that was art that was going to be at Rollingwood, but then was relocated down there. But now there's going to be a second piece of work.
Sure. So the overall project, as you mentioned, is the restoration of the, of the fountain. It's also going to include new landscape, both in the park and then on the, on the median that's adjacent to the park. Along with that, we've also worked with Caltrain to get the bike lockers down there and those are already in place. And then we're going to be updating all of the seating and furniture and bringing more of that seating forward in the plaza so that it's easier to patrol for the police officers that are patrolling that area. The total project cost, I'm doing this off the top of my head, is just over $800,000 for that entire project.
And so I'm, I'm bringing this up and we talked about the facade, which Councilmember Alvarez had mentioned about maybe what can we do in putting that into an initiative when it comes time? We did have a facade program here. It's when we had redevelopment and out of downtown, one business person took advantage of it. And that was Harry Costa. Nobody else chose to. And again, they were, it was kind of a, we'll give you some and through the redevelopment, and then they had to step forward as well. So I also have, when we start talking about surveys, which now we know there's a survey, when we talk about, we haven't, we're not caring about downtown. I mean, whether it's newspaper racks, whether it's the garbage cans, when I was up on this council, newspaper racks went through the whole city. Now it's just downtown. We're talking about the steam cleaning is more. I also have a concern, and that's where I kind of like where we were going with it, is it reminds me of the, asking the community, what do you want to see in your neighborhood parks? Well, there's a laundry list of what they wanted to see because we didn't really have parameters. And now there's question of, well, where is it? How come you haven't done it? You haven't even revisited it. But that may be another item that's going to come back up. So getting information, I think, is good. A survey is good, but also, as you said, we're going to get to the next council meeting, activating Centennial Plaza through various donations and a plan. Posey Park, $800,000 is going to be spent. So I, the vegetation, the marquee, those are not completed yet. We still have things that haven't been completed and I always want to set expectations and not all of a sudden, there's meetings and stuff and then it's like, well, what have you done? Why haven't you done anything? Well, we're in the middle of a budget too. So we, whether we have labor negotiations, we're in the middle of a budget, we have done our initiatives. So I just don't want it to get false hope to what the possibility, and again, if you want to go to a whiteboard and say, so tell us what, what you're thinking. I think it needs to be more narrowed, and to Councilmember Hamilton, it's true. I mean, if folks have done it or other chambers or other groups in other communities, I don't see there's, there is anything wrong with utilizing that information, honestly, just to kind of not reinvent the wheel. But those are some of my thoughts and that we're not duplicating, like another survey when we have a survey getting ready. So somebody says, well, we want to do something at Posey Park. Well, $800,000 is going to be spent. So why are we going there? Centennial Plaza, we're activating it. Well, we're just going to get something in the next council meeting. So I also want to be mindful of that too. Anyway. Please.
I just wanted to respond to a couple of things.
So do I. Go ahead.
Yeah. So number four, list assist with activating, because I am aware that that is a project. I would like to help with that. As the council member that represents that district, I specifically asked staff if I could be involved with it. But to streamline this, let's say we get rid of number four. So I won't be involved with activating Centennial Plaza. Mr. Mayor, the survey that, or the presentation that the subcommittee, that was 2021, that's already four years ago. Things are different. You know, we, we've, we need to rebuild relationships with our downtown community, our businesses and our customers. So I'm asking that with getting rid of assist in Centennial Plaza and primarily the request at the time that I submitted it to staff was, hey, what can we do at Centennial Plaza that really takes no effort from staff? To encourage somebody to read poetry on a Saturday morning at 10 o'clock? To encourage somebody to have a Tai Chi class on Sunday at nine o'clock? Whatever the times are, that allow activity to bring some vibrancy to Centennial Plaza in addition to whatever staff wants to do. These are bigger events. One event a month, one day out of four weeks, right? So I'm fine with just removing that because this, this primarily is about getting input from our community and letting them know, and community is, I'm sorry, I didn't answer that, is business owners and it is shoppers. And the shoppers primarily, I think primarily, we don't know what, who our shoppers are. Is it 70% downtown residents? Is it, who knows, right? But we could conduct surveys to ask people, hey, you mind answering a few questions? And we'll ask the questions and we'll be able to provide some data for free. So those are the things that, that I, I wanted to make sure to be able to streamline this, right? So I got rid of one of them and I, you could even get rid of number two. I mean, I, instead of saying private investments, improvements are just encourage beautification, right? So we're not going to talk about businesses and money. It's like, hey, you know, it'd be great if you, you put some flowers, which our community has done. We've had volunteers to beautify the planters and I was proud to be there helping that out. So I'm still trying to bring this home so people feel comfortable and still assure, it always comes back to this. And I understand, Mayor Medina, is your view on hope, but I think people really should have hope. It's not that you shouldn't build the hope up for them and worry that you're not going to achieve it. I think people want to have hope regardless and I think this is one way to, it's not, it's not, it's hope, but it's also action that we're showing as the council. We want to hear from our merchants. We want to hear from our residents and having this subcommittee is one way to do it. If somebody came up with a different way, wonder we, how long do we have to wait? Right? How much is it going to cost? I understand part of the whole point of the subcommittee is to do things that really don't involve staff. Staff is busy, I get it. And this subcommittee will give some initial feedback that could be used to improve the survey later, right? So we're down to three things and there's no investment, it's beautification. And if it came down to it, you can, you could eliminate two if you'd like, if that's going to get us there, because the surveys are going to tell us what our community wants.
And when we had it four years ago, it was about all Town Center, Bay Hill, El Camino, San Bruno Avenue, all the businesses. Now, on this take, it's Samantua Avenue, period.
Okay.
So from San Bruno Avenue, we'll say to Aperture. And that would be, that would be it.
So you're absolutely, absolutely right, Mr. Mayor. As the representative for District Four in our downtown, I kept the scope small because that would be too much to do. To do Bay Hill, to do Town Center, to include El Camino, I mean, Councilman Salazar said it, that's just too much. For what I'm even concentrating in our downtown may seem much, but I'm paring it down to get to hopefully a unanimous vote.
Tom.
So, so to go back to the, to the mayor's point, you brought up the example of the, the facade improvement program. And I want to use that as an example here of where I see a difference between the broad survey of the community, the whole community that were, that is already underway and what I believe I'm hearing for what, what the, the goal of this, of this subcommittee would be. So if we, if, if there was a question on that survey that went out to the community, do you think that the, that the business facades in our downtown should be approved? I think there'd be a lot of people saying yes. But it's very, very different than asking the, the business owners and the property owners, if we had a facade improvement program that looked like this, would you take advantage of it? That's a much different question posed to a much different audience and that's a much more valuable answer. Because yeah, everybody wants things to look great, but what I see the value here is, yeah, we tried this once before and only one business owner took advantage of it. So maybe we should see if there's going to be interest in doing something before we would attempt something like that again. So we ask the question and this is the forum for, for us asking that question. And I wouldn't necessarily complete, so that's for number two. So I wouldn't necessarily completely remove number two because I would want to ask some questions in the survey about it. We're not going to necessarily encourage private investment. We're going to find out if we can, if we can, if, if there's a way that we can help with it to try to encourage it, but, but, you know, just through asking the questions on the, on the survey. Same thing with number four. You know, if we're going to be doing a, if we're going to be activating Centennial Plaza every month, which is wonderful, I love, I'd love to hear that. Thank you. That's great. I would doubt that we have 12 events completely planned out already. We're going to think about what those things are and maybe the merchants have some great ideas and maybe, so maybe we can solicit, solicit ideas as part of the survey. And, you know, that's not going to, you know, force us to do those things. It's going to be, let's, and, you know, let's get as many ideas as possible. And, you know, our merchants and our property owners have a huge stake in our downtown. That's where they've, they've chosen to make their livelihoods and I think they should have, I, I like the idea of them having this conduit to be able to give us their input. So those are my thoughts.
Anything else?
Since you're, thank you. So I, I agree with a lot of what Councilmember Hamilton just said in, in terms of, you know, we, we, the, the goal of this does seem to be a lot more tailored than the, the broader survey that we talked about and a survey of residents would definitely yield different answers. And what I was, just sort of looking at the bullet points, I, I think that there is value in a lot of the concepts I'm seeing in here, what, what I, I had issue with was more in how it was, what, what it was, was actually stated in terms of what the subcommittee would be doing. And so going back to this concept of focusing the subcommittee on generating a survey, I think this, this could be sort of realigned where we take number five, which is to deliver practical, community-backed recommendations to council for action as the primary goal, which I think we all agree that that should be the goal of the subcommittee. And as sub points to that, number one, I'm not sure about, but number two could be, you know, seeking input on private investments. Three could be seeking input on creating processes, seeking input on the, you know, the benefits of activating Centennial Plaza. And then, so now those things are focus areas that we want to see the subcommittee bring back on. And to that, I would add parking, you know, what, what's, and, and honestly, I mean, that's. But, but, you know, when we talk about, you know, what we could be doing differently down there and sort of, you know, thinking out of the box a little bit, I mean, would our merchants prefer to subsidize the parking themselves and get rid of the meters? It's, it's, it's a question that we should at least ask them. You know, they took issue with the meters, which we felt we needed for other practical reasons, but, you know, is this an opportunity to, to query them with, you know, would, you know, would you be willing to subsidize it as, as a business owner rather than have your customers pay for it? I don't know. I, I think that would be a fair question to ask them if we're going to be probing, but so I, I think if we restructure this that way, and, and I think I'm hearing some concurrence from, from all of us that if we, if we focus the subcommittee on developing this survey, we can leave all of these components in there. It's just that the true focus of the committee has to be gathering that information, consolidating it and bringing it back to the council with a strong recommendation in time for our strategic initiatives.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
No.
I'll make it a motion.
I have to, I have to.
Well, we could do the motion.
Well, we could do the motion. Yeah, yeah.
Public comment.
We have one speaker card, Stephen Seymour. Would you please approach the podium?
Yeah. Hit the button.
All right. Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmember. I'm sitting here listening to you all, and I'm not sure what my public comments will do here because it sounds like there's general consensus that, you know, this body, the subcommittee, needs to be developed. I would agree with that. I would agree that many of you campaigned on... On at least part of your campaign promises was to improve our downtown. And I do think that over the past four to six years, we've seen improvements down there. In fact, Mr. Mayor, you talked about some of those improvements. Others of you did, too. The parklets, the parks that are there, Centennial Plaza I'm hearing in multiple places about activating Centennial Plaza. That's all good news. But I think the city council will help you gather information that will benefit you during your budgeting process. I think that there's a large number of the merchants down there that still don't feel engaged. And I say that because I've had an opportunity over the past four weeks to kind of talk to some of these merchants on behalf of the New Chamber. And many of them have... It's like, wow, nobody's ever come and talked to us. There's certain businesses there that we always go to, you know? And you guys probably can name them yourself, right? But there's another 100 businesses that we never go to. And I think that there's value in talking to them as well. Michael, I like the fact that you started the conversation about the specifics, the scope, the focus, that it should be narrowed. And I think that really your survey should focus on the business and the property owners because that's where you have the most leverage. And I did hear some comments up there from some of you on things that you can't do, especially without legal, and things that really are more staff duties than your own. But I believe that the information that you gather will be helpful to the city and to staff and ultimately benefit the businesses. You have the leverage with the owners and with the business and property owners, but that's what brings the foot traffic. And that's really what you're all concerned about, is the foot traffic and the tax revenue. Many years ago, my wife bought the house that we're in now. And we bought it so that we could have a walkable street. And I'm seeing glimpses of that. And I really think you have an opportunity through this process to help move that along so that that becomes a reality. I'm interested in activating Centennial Plaza, but I don't think it should be removed because Travis only talked about one day a month, you know? There's a whole bunch of other days, and you brought those up, Marty. So thank you very much for making this a focus.
And the staff report will come from the director, but that's next meeting, and then we will have more detail. Was there any other? Okay, thank you. So...
I'd like to second the motion that was on the floor.
I'm sorry. I want to get back to where we were.
Yeah. So just in terms of the process, I believe the mayor has the authority to create the subcommittee. You don't necessarily need a motion, but maybe we could entertain a motion just to get our concurrence on the topic and then allow you to execute on it, if that's appropriate or necessary.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I believe the mayor does have the authority to request the council... To suggest who would be on a subcommittee. But then the approval stays in the hands of the council. I'm looking at the city attorney, of course.
Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor Medina, that is correct that typically the mayor makes the appointments, and then those appointments are subject to council approval. And that approval can be given through a motion or if the council has general concurrence, we understand what the mayor's appointment is. I think the practice has been, you know, you've used different approaches in the past. But here, where you have... You want clarity. It makes sense for the mayor to make the appointments and then get the council to approve.
Chair. So let's go back to that, and if you could articulate it.
Sure. So, you know, based on the sort of reorganization, I saw heads nodding. So I think that there's general concurrence on making bullet point five our broad agenda or objective item. And then the other... Keeping all of the other bullets as sort of discussion points within the survey. I don't know that we... I won't make a motion, but I will ask the council to all just concur by just voice concurrence that we're all agreeing to that?
I concur.
Yes.
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 Okay. So there's concurrence on the restructuring. And so then I will leave it to... To make the next move.
Okay. Was there any other... We've gotten past that. Is there any other follow-up?
Yeah. For an obvious request, as the person bringing this forward, I would like to be on the subcommittee.
Yes. I was going to, for various reasons, right? You're representing... You're bringing this topic up. So, you know, I don't know if anybody has a desire to also serve. I'm happy to do so as well. But I don't know if it would be confusing to have Medina Medina. But anyway.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I think I volunteered earlier also that I would love to serve. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, all right. We're all concurrence? Done. So let's continue on with the next item. Item B. Consider introducing reading by title only and waiving further reading of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of San Bruno..." "Of the City Council of the City of San Bruno," amending section 2.04.140 of the San Bruno Municipal Code to increase city member salaries. And I'm sorry, I just took the city clerk's job. And that was supposed to be her reading that. So we'll just pretend she did. Councilmember Alvarez, you're up.
I think our... I think our... The last part of our conversation about this topic is to vote. We spent X amount of time last meeting, and part of that agreement was to lower our stipend amount down to 859. Sorry.
890. 890. 890.
890, yes. Instead of 1,275.
Any speaker cards? No speaker cards. Any questions or comments for the council member in regards to this topic? Is there any action, then?
I will make a motion to approve the item as read by the mayor.
A second?
There's a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Vote is for one. Recorded now. As I said, I wanted to move up items nine and 10. So are there any council committee report-outs for this evening? Is there any comments from council members for this evening? Oh, that's too good. Okay. So with that said, and I think everybody... I appreciate that because we're going to be going into closed session. There are two items. We're going to have item A, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, and then item B, conference with labor negotiators. And so at this time, the council will go into closed session. The Zoom link will be closed. There will be no reportable action, but we will come back out. But the Zoom link will be stopped at this point, and we will go into closed session.